I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 28th, 2015. The first order of business is the approval of minutes of August 12th, September 9th, and September 23rd of 2015. We will first do the August 12th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved of August 12th. September 9th minutes, any additions or corrections? Do we have a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Minutes of September 23rd, any additions or corrections?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Good job on the minutes, Robin. Thirteen pages of a lot of public hearing.
Yeah. Especially that zoning ordinance one.
Yes, yeah. The first public hearing today is a petition of Randolph College for a conditional use permit at 2711 and 2715 Rivermont Avenue and 227 West Moreland Street to allow the use of existing buildings at 2715 Rivermont for student housing and existing buildings at 2711 Rivermont and 227 West Moreland as school offices with the construction of an associated parking area in an R4 medium-high-density multifamily residential district.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission, the properties currently all zoned R4. It's located in the block between West Moreland Street and South Princeton Circle. The conditional use permit would allow the use of the existing apartment buildings located at 2715 for continued use as student housing, but would allow for the increase in the number of students. Currently, it's being used with no more than three students per unit, which is permitted by right by the zoning ordinance. The two structures at 2711 Rivermont Avenue and 227 West Moreland are proposed to be used for student, I'm sorry, college offices. And those are the former Moyan property and the house at 227 West Moreland. Also, as part of the petition, there would be a parking area constructed between 227 West Moreland and 2711 Rivermont Avenue. The student housing, the total request would add an additional 12 students beyond what is currently being permitted by right there now. All of the properties are recommended for traditional residential uses on the city's future land use map. These areas are predominantly characterized by older, the city's older neighborhoods constructed prior to World War II. Institutional uses that are compatible in scale with single-family homes or duplexes are deemed to be compatible in these areas. And the reuse of the structures for, you know, college offices would be in keeping with that land use. The preliminary site plan does indicate that the existing gravel driveway, and there's actually another entrance off of West Moreland, both of those would be removed, and means of ingress to the site would be from Rivermont Avenue, and egress would be to South Princeton Circle out to the light at Rivermont Avenue. It is important to note that that traffic signal does have pedestrian heads on it, and the college has directed its students using this facility to cross at that location. Planning staff, as well as citizens, has expressed some concern about the safety of students crossing Rivermont Avenue, not crossing at an approved location. We have gone back for five years, and there have been no pedestrian-related incidents at that area. And I believe one of our planners was out that way this morning, and there were students lined up at the crosswalk at the PED signal, so it seems like they're listening to their administrators, which is a good thing, and hopefully they'll continue to do that. The city's transportation engineer did not have any comments of concern with the petition as proposed. The college did conduct a neighborhood meeting back in May of this year, and the planning division does recommend approval of the conditional use permit as proposed with the conditions outlined in the report.
Great, thank you, Tom. Who is here to speak on behalf of the petitioner? If you could come up, please, and sign in and...
And we have Tommy Hammack with Walden Wilson here with us.
There's a pen right there if you need it. If you can go ahead and...
So, is there anything you'd like to share, add, and comment on?
I think Tom did a wonderful job. I don't know what else could be added to that. Everything he said is exactly what we would like to do, and we would like approval to do. And I appreciate Tom working with us on this process. It's been a process that's been, you know, in play for about six months with us, you know, to do something with this property and have the zoning changed so that we can increase the housing number, the count in the apartments, and also make Moyans and West Moreland, 227 West Moreland, into office space. So, Tommy, do you have anything you want to...
No, again, Tom did a great job of explaining what you were planning on doing.
Fantastic, thank you. Well, I'm sure we might call you up in a little bit with any possible questions. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this petition? If there is no one else to speak in favor of this position, is there anyone to speak in opposition of this petition? All right, come on up, please, and after you have a seat, please sign in, and then after that, please share with us your name and address. And then we're going to add one more task. If you could scoot the microphone over to yourself, please, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Is that good?
That's perfect.
Okay. My name's Chuck Hurt. I've lived here for a while, and I have properties at 220 South Princeton and 231 West Moreland. And I took a little time to put some things down on paper. I'd like to explain some observations that I've made. First, since Randolph College started using the Grosvenor Apartments for student housing, parking's been tight in that vicinity, especially in the evenings and weekends, and that's been tolerable. I travel Rivermont Avenue several times a day, and if I'm behind a GLTC bus, usually I have to stop in front of the Grosvenor Apartments, and since the students came back in August, it can't get into the bus stop because of cars that are parked there. So it backs up traffic on Rivermont Avenue. Most of the streets in the vicinity of the Grosvenor Apartments have parking on one side only due to their narrowness, and then it's one car at a time getting through the streets. Even though the plan of development proposed by Randolph College shows traffic coming in opposite the main entrance to Randolph College and out South Princeton Circle, in reality, there is little control where the students park who live at or visit the Grosvenor Apartments, and Rivermont Avenue parking is limited and usually full. So long-term residents and students who travel this area will have to find any inconvenient space they can, making life frustrating for all. Most of what Randolph College is requesting would appear to be by right, but is leaving little if any excess capacity concerning parking and traffic for the area in question. The main objection I have to this development has to do with pedestrian traffic crossing Rivermont Avenue. I have observed very few students in the Grosvenor Apartments using the traffic light at South Princeton Circle to cross Rivermont Avenue. Most of the students cross Rivermont at the main entrance to the school, which to many seems a natural path because the main entrance to the Grosvenor Apartments is directly across Rivermont Avenue from the main entrance to Randolph College. The path is further compromised for westbound traffic on Rivermont Avenue in that the drivers are looking at a traffic light that is about 150 feet beyond the path where the students typically cross Rivermont. And may not, and the drivers may not understand the dangers of students crossing at that point and be distracted. This situation in many ways is similar to the one on Oddfellow's Road, where Liberty University students crossed access buildings on either side, and two students were hit by vehicles and injured in the last year. If this development moves forward as planned, then it is only a matter of time before Randolph College student is injured or killed on Rivermont Avenue. Should Randolph College continue to purchase properties on the south side of Rivermont, this will make matters worse. Randolph College may be developing by right, but it doesn't mean that it's best for the community or for Randolph students. Many students that are, this many students should not be housed on the north side of Rivermont Avenue where most, when most of their destinations lie at Randolph College, and not be crossing Rivermont Avenue without traffic control. Now, I know in the last couple of days, more students have crossed at the light, but I think there's a good right, good reason for that, and part of that is this meeting today. And I think you all have done a great job for these few days, but what are you going to do later? Are you going to maintain this? Are you going to be there at nights and on weekends, and when they decide that it's a party and they're half drunk, and they're just going to cross the street wherever they damn well please? Those are the kind of questions I think that need to be asked. These aren't responsible adults necessarily. I'm not saying that they're necessarily irresponsible, but they're a different group of people that kind of abide by a different set of rules. And they're doing things by right, which is a good thing, but I think there comes a point where even though somebody's doing something by right, it isn't always the best thing. And I think you need to give some consideration to that.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition for this? Thank you. And as we go forward, as part of our guidelines, as we have there about limiting remarks to three minutes, which I didn't go over prior to this, so just kind of be aware of your articulation, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
My name is Carter Haley. I live at 2721 Rivermont Avenue on the corner of Rivermont and South Princeton. My family has owned that property since 1962, and I am more directly affected by the Grosvenor than any single individual. I live at 2721, have for 15 of the last 20 years, and would like to be able to continue to live there for the rest of my life. The Grosvenor may make that impossible. The situation, since it has been a dorm, has alternated between barely tolerable and intolerable in terms of partying, drunkenness, loudness, music, late at night. Now, I will give Randolph its due. I complained three times last year with no discernible result. After having complained directly to the President, there has been modest, and I will say modest, improvement. The biggest challenge is that there are six balconies overlooking my backyard, and students are allowed, I have asked that they be forbidden by rule from partying on those porches or with their doors open. That has not been done. It's noisy. The thing I object to most about this proposal is increasing the number of noisy students next door to me. I can see no argument for that being a benefit to the community, to the neighborhood. The only benefit it possibly is is to Randolph's bottom line. And I'm all in favor of Randolph's bottom line. I want them to be there. Have been a college professor myself, and I'm sympathetic. But it's a very odd situation that, as if I understand correctly, while Randolph owns those properties, they are not part of the campus, and they are not ruled by the same guidelines that the campus is ruled by. The behavior, if those buildings were behind the wall, if the Grosvenor were behind the wall, the situations that I've described would not have existed. They wouldn't be tolerated. They are tolerated. I don't see any way that it won't get worse with 12 more students, and I respectfully request that at least you deny that part of this zoning request. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to this petition? If there's anyone else in opposition to this petition, you may come forward if it's anything you would like to rebut. You can feel free to come up and address any of their comments.
Well, we did have a neighborhood meeting, and we had probably half a dozen people show up, and the last gentleman that was up here was one of those. And that's when he was able to express his dissatisfaction directly to the President. And since that time, the college has explored ways to handle that situation over there, and it has improved, and I know security is still working on that to kind of minimize the activities over there, especially after hours at night. And we'll continue to do that. You know, students on campus, you know, we have the same rules for one side of campus as we do for this facility here. It's not any different. So we expect the same thing from these students also. So, and there's a, there's a process for these students getting into these apartments. There's a selection process that goes through, and that may have to be addressed, you know, in a little more stringent fashion. I don't know, but we're working on this.
As well as the gentleman that spoke against this, between the two of you combined, there is additional three minutes. If there's anything else you'd like to add, if you think you've accurately got the points across, that's fine, but if there is anything else you'd like to add, there is a three-minute window to do that if you so choose. If you're good, that's fine, too. Okay. So if there's no other comments on the against side, at this point, the public hearing is closed. The matter is now with planning commissioners. Commissioners, what's your comments, questions, or concerns?
I have questions. Tom, what is it that Randolph can do by right that, and what is it that they can't do by right that they need the CUP for?
Well, they are currently using the apartments as apartments, so any apartment unit can have up to three unrelated individuals in it, so that's how they are putting students in. So they are able to do that by right. Since they would not be able to use the Moyan property or 227 West Moreland, which are the two houses, as college offices without the CUP, nor would they be able to build a parking lot without the CUP. And they could not increase the number of unrelated people in these apartments without the CUP. So the, just to recap, the CUP is allowing essentially for this to be converted to dorms instead of just apartments by allowing more than three unrelated individuals per unit, allowing the houses to be used as offices, and allowing the construction of the parking area.
Do you happen to know how much parking is needed for the offices, or how, and how much will be additional for the apartments?
Well, the zoning ordinance stipulates that at the time of a conditional use permit approval, the college or university dictates how much parking that they need. Typically, if this was a standalone request, it would be one space per unit, residential unit, and then two per thousand square feet of office space. I think if you look at the existing parking, the existing parking for the apartments, it's substandard now. This would only improve that situation. And in terms of the offices, I'm not sure how many employees they are proposing to have there, but I think the parking area would only improve the situation in the area.
Well, they're going from 13 existing spaces to a total of 40.
Correct.
But they're adding offices that... Could we, could we ask...
You can ask whoever you'd like.
Could you come back up, please? Thank you.
I can answer your question.
And if you can do us a favor, please, and move the microphone back over. Thank you.
That's Mr. Wood, right?
Yes.
So how many, how many parking spaces do you think you're going to need for the office building? Do you know how many employees you'll have in there?
We're not yet certain what type of office space we're going to put in each one of those buildings. There's been no, there's been discussion, but nothing has been decided on, so I'm not sure how many employees will be on that side of Rivermont.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I've got some questions as well. Mr. Wood, if you could.
Yes.
I know the petition with the increase in the students, you have a total, you have the ability to have up to 58 students in the, in the parking building.
I believe that's, I believe that's correct, yes.
And do we know how many people are in there currently? You should be able to, I mean, current students are in there?
I think it's fully housed right now, so if you would subtract 12 of that, that's currently 46, I believe.
Yeah, 46. That's what I, that's how my arithmetic added up also.
And that also includes one two-bedroom unit in the smaller building being used by Dean of Students employee, an employee there who really, you know, is over some of the Residential Life programs, so, you know, it's not all just students.
And how would you, what, what controls would you have over the parking spots there? I think Randolph has a parking sticker policy, don't they?
Yes, and the, in talking with our security chief, they have stickers specifically for this parking area here, so, you know, no one else from across campus could be parking here in certain areas. And of course, you would have the office parking, you know, which would be, somehow that would have to be dealt with, with some kind of sticker also, I imagine. But what we're trying to do is make sure that anybody that parks over here does have a reason to be there or has business there.
So presumably, and I know this is hard to enforce, but presumably if someone just wanted, if a student was visiting another student and they didn't have a sticker, they really shouldn't be parked in that lot.
That's correct.
So, now, they may park out on the street, which is another part of the challenge over there, but, but at least you're trying to limit the, control the accessibility in some way. Is that correct?
That's correct. And one of the things we did do is make the driveway one-way coming off of Rivermont and exiting onto Princeton, and we felt like that would improve the safety on Rivermont, it less cars there at that juncture where you might have students walking on the sidewalk. So I think that's been a really good help to us, you know, in improving safety. And then, I know your question isn't about this, but we did have a meeting with the city officials to talk about how we might handle pedestrian crossings on Rivermont, and we did, in the end, agree that we need to urge students or even tell students to go down to the corner and cross. And, and the city of Lynchburg has, of course, has the perfect right to ticket students who don't do that. So I have seen a lot of students go down to the intersection, although I have seen some, you know, slow traffic try to get across that way, but I think for the most part, it's working.
And as far as the rules, I was happy to hear that you have the same rules for the governor apartments as you do for the main part of the campus. And I know it's notoriously difficult to try to control dormitory areas, and I think back to my own college days and think I should have been probably thrown out two or three times at the student housing I was in. But what kind of, you know, what kind of basic rules do you have as far as after-hours parties and things of that nature concerned? Alcohol?
You know, I really can't answer that. I don't know. But I know there are things in place to control that, such as the time and proper, of course, you know, underage are not supposed to have alcohol anyway, but I don't know exactly what the rules are for that, because I haven't really spoken in that, about that with our security people. But, I don't know. We have with us Wes Fugit today. Wes, did you want to add to that in some way?
Am I permitted to?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
If you could, as, as Mr. Wood, don't identify yourself and sign in, please.
And I'll acknowledge that I have a conflict of interest in that I am also a resident that walks down West Moreland every day and crosses at the crosswalk, I might add. So as far as alcohol is concerned, students that are under 21 are not permitted to consume alcohol as required by state and federal law. There are hours posted for the residence halls for the weekdays, and I may not have this exactly accurate, but it's around midnight, and the weekends is, it's extended. There's a professional staff member, the Director of Residence Life, who lives in that, the back building, and there's also a resident assistant who lives in the front building who are responsible for monitoring that. There's also a head resident that lives across the street in Wright Hall who does rounds there as well, in addition to our security team. The students are also very aware that I frequently am walking by, and I have made a few drop-bys to let them know of my concerns. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make certain you had some kind of reasonable expectations and hours that the, you know, students weren't out at four o'clock in the morning now.
Yeah.
Enforcing those rules, I know, is a challenge at times.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, I, I hope that we will do everything that we can when a complaint is made to help resolve that situation.
And, because I, you know, again, I hope they're not these kinds of difficult situations, but I assume you have a policy at some point, if you have a particularly disruptive student, that you can actually have that student removed from the college living accommodations.
They can be removed from the apartments and put into different housing. They can be prohibited from living on campus, and they can be completely removed from the campus for either a semester or for the entirety of their time at the college.
All right. You know, the last time I remember a serious accident on Rivermont Avenue, it was a tragic thing, was when Dr. Calvert was killed about 15 years ago, when he was walking across Rivermont Avenue. I can't remember if he was going or coming to a, to a Randolph-making event. I don't know if anybody else in the room remembers that incident or not. And he was, he was hit by a prominent individual here in town who, you know, it was, it was a tragic situation. It was at night, but, you know, I, I think, I think he was in there, actually in the crosswalk, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe that was the issue. He was not in the crosswalk. I can't remember. I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the records, but that was, that was 15 years ago. He was an elderly gentleman at the time, you know, very esteemed member of the community, but that was, that was 15 years ago, and I don't remember, and I live relatively close in and down in that area all the time. I don't remember any other serious, I know you said you went back and looked at the records for five years. I don't remember any other serious incident out there at all.
I think, and from what I've been told, I think that incident occurred more towards, to the east, towards that intersection where you're getting close to Magnolia's, and not specifically right where we're talking about now.
Yeah, so, all right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Mark, do you have anything?
Mark, do you have anything?
I'm having a hard time finding words here. So right now, they buy right there and totaled to three non-related people in the apartments. And trying to match apples to apples, we just approved something over at Lynchburg College in a house, and I'm trying to remember what it was we approved. Was it going to be three or four people that were going to be in that house there at the corner?
In terms, they have anywhere four or five.
So more than that in certain houses. So...
And they classify those as dorms as well?
Student housing.
Student housing.
And do they own the surrounding properties?
I'm sorry?
At Lynchburg College, the neighboring, the adjoining parcels?
Over time, they've, they've acquired, but I won't say they necessarily own everything that's adjacent to one of their student housing.
Well, to the one that most recently came up that you're referring to.
The graduate student.
I cannot remember.
Okay.
There are three issues that I may note of. The one being the use of the crosswalk, and I think there are simple steps that could be done, such as signage, where the students would typically be leaving the property, just a reminder to use the crosswalk, and to encourage that. The, the slop over on the, on-street parking, that is a concern in that area, and the bus stop blockage is certainly a concern. And the bus stop parking, I'm assuming that is marked, no, all bus stops have no parking signage?
Yeah, with this marked as a bus stop, there's no parking. But, you know, if that was really an issue, I would think that GLTC would be calling the police.
Sure. And that's, that's easily dealt with with enforcement.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I'm not, it's maybe not an issue. The neighbor relations, as a member of a sister institution, that's something that we've struggled with. And all I can say is I think that reaching out by both sides and having open lines of communication has made a big difference. And knowing that if you have a complaint, it's being dealt with and followed up on, really does make a difference. And I would encourage our Randolph College to really make endeavors in that, and to be proactive with their own security. Don't wait till there's a problem, but check into things as, as this moves forward. I'm supporting the project. I think there are some valid concerns, but I think there's good efforts being made to address them.
Tom, can you please pull up the overhead map? Thank you.
I might be able to do you one better. How's that?
I actually like to pull away just a little, well, that might work.
So this is South Princeton.
Correct.
These are the two apartment units. This is West Moreland property. This is Moyan's. This is where the parking lot is.
Right, okay. So if you could go to the lower-left edge of the apartment building?
This?
The one up to kind of bit, all right. And then go probably at, maybe, not quite a nine o'clock, but just west, maybe just to the residential property to the left.
This?
Yeah, that. Okay. Now, I believe there's some residential properties rather close to this. Now, I was trying to determine, those are not, that's not university-owned, is it?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either. Now, the apartment building, I was trying to reference on one that was constructed.
The apartments?
Yes.
That should have been in the report under...
There was a 277 West Moreland Street that was constructed in nineteen twenty-four, twenty-seven fifteen. It does show nineteen fifty-four.
Yep, two, three-story wood-framed masonry-sided structures constructed in nineteen fifty-four.
Okay. Now, is there a way to verify if that's all the buildings, or just, you know, when the first one was construction? The reason why I mention that is when I go through the evaluations on the city website on ownership history, there's some quite significant jumps that I was trying to piece together to figure out if all of it was done as one large construction project, or if it was piecemeal.
I can only give you what was in the history.
Mr. Hale, if you could come up, please?
Yes.
All right. If you can come here, since you had the property since you said about nineteen sixty-ish?
Nineteen sixty.
Okay. Do you remember about when all of that was constructed, roughly?
Everything, to my knowledge, everything was already there, except the Grosvenor. The house there was the Cattie Ford House tragically knocked down and replaced by that, I believe about nineteen sixty-six to sixty-eight.
All right, great. Thank you. That was it. Now, I am fully supportive of the, the office use. I think that's wonderful. I get very concerned when there's people that bought next to an apartment building that have residential use, and all of a sudden now, it's, there's a lot more individuals packed in next to them. I just think of that as a precedent that they have to be very careful on. And I thought of Lynchburg College one, but I seem to recall, they did adjoin, they did own the adjoining parcels, where it was an island. It was a separate one.
Yeah.
And so that one, I was willing to support. Had it been the first one surrounded by non-university property, I would have probably voted against it, unless there was a master plan to incorporate more of it. So the office use, I'm fully supportive of that. Quite frankly, the increase in the number of, of residents of any demographic, student, non-student, I am not in favor of, given the close proximity to the properties on the nearby street. Yes.
I understand the reasoning, but just let me point out that the property is zoned R4.
Yeah.
Which means it's multifamily residential. Under the existing ordinance, they could get right around twenty-one point, twenty-one point two-nine units per acre. Under the proposed ordinance, if they did certain things, they could get up to twenty-nine units per acre. So technically, under the current zoning, if they were to look at the one-point-four acres, they could get many more units and many more students by right than what they're proposing to put in there now. And also, I mean, if they wanted to, they could, they could demolish the Moyan property. They could demolish West Moreland. I think what they're actually trying to do is to fit in with the existing neighborhood a little bit better. And those apartment buildings were constructed in fifty-four, not the sixties, nineteen fifty-four. I believe the gentleman said they were constructed in nineteen sixty.
That's incorrect.
Well, then the Sussers' records are incorrect, so I can only go what's, I'm not going to get into...
All right, all right. At this point, when the public hearing is closed, if we call you up, we would be more than glad to address that.
The city records indicate nineteen fifty-four. So fifty-four is when they were constructed, according to the Sussers'. So, I mean, if we're going to talk about having an urban environment and supporting our schools and colleges, then the planning staff do not think that the addition of twelve more students, or however many more it is, is actually going to be detrimental to that area. It's more of a wise use of that property than if Randolph hadn't have gotten it. If it was to maintain private ownership, you're probably going to have a more difficult time, because it could still be leased to students, and there's not going to be any interaction with the campus security. It would all be just city police. So it's probably a better situation having it in Randolph control than a private owner and being leased to students.
Well, I never said anything about Randolph or private. I was talking specifically the quality, quality of life of the residences nearby. It's completely separate. But I respect your opinion. Now, what I'm going to do, it's fine, as always with any of the fellow commissioners, fine with any, you know, I encourage dissension and independent thinking. But I'm going to make a condition. If there is no second, doesn't hurt my feelings, but I feel passionately about this, that I want to go ahead with this, that I'm going to go ahead and have a condition that the two buildings proposed for office use remain as office use, but the current structure for residence has remained at its current occupancy. So this being a conditional use permit, there is the right to put conditions on, and I'm going to toss that forward. If there's no second, the motion for the condition dies. So I'm going to shorten the condition that just says, "The property at twenty-seven fifteen Rivermont shall retain its current maximum residential limit."
So that's the, the amended condition that you're proposing. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So where does that leave the parking lot? Does that, does that stay, remain?
Everything else stays unchanged.
Okay.
The only part is, is keeping the occupancy of the current residential use the same.
Jared, I, I agree with you. That's why I was asking about the question of the three and the four, and I think it should stay the same.
So you can say, if you want to say second, you can, and then we can get into discussion.
Yes, I will second.
So, any discussion?
I just wish we knew a little bit more about how much parking is actually needed there. I mean, I'm still concerned about parking. If adding these twelve more students, we're going from forty-six to fifty-eight occupants. So adding twelve more students, and we're going from only thirteen to forty parking spaces. And apparently, those two buildings have had, you know, they've been used in the past, and so they've had some kind of need for parking in the past. So obviously, we're going way up on the parking. But I, we don't seem to know how many of these students, and just because the students this year have cars, we don't know how many next year are going to have cars. But if I just had a clue to what proportion of students at the school have cars, I wonder if I could get that question answered.
You can call up the president and ask. You can call up whoever you'd like to ask.
I will, I will make sure I correct. I'm vice president. I would, I would not speak, assume that I'm the president, but...
What's your name?
It's Wes Fugit, and my title's Vice President, Chief of Staff. The rates in the past ten years have been between fifty percent and sixty percent of our students with vehicles on campus. Much of our faculty and staff have permits to be on campus, but a lot of us are, like with me, within walking distance. And so while they have the ability to park on campus, most of us don't park on campus on a daily basis. Certainly, there are those that don't live within walking distance that do.
So about fifty to sixty percent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, as I said, I go up and down this area quite often. I don't live in the immediate neighborhood, but I live in the approximate neighborhood. And not to minimize the, the increase from forty-six to fifty-eight, we're not talking about additional units. If we were talking about additional living units, I think I would be more concerned as opposed to we have the same number of actual units there. It's just more people in them. And the comments that were made in response to my question about Randolph trying to manage the students' behavior as well as you can in a situation like that, you know, I think they are trying to keep the, the neighborhood flavor there. And I know I've been concerned about several of those buildings, just as a, as a citizen, as to what was going to happen to them, with Moyan's building and the, and the, and the other building. And I think they've been responsible neighbors, and, and I, I think Randolph will continue to treat as responsible neighbors as they can in that, in that setting. And I'm going to vote against your proposed, what is an effect, a substitute.
amended condition, I'm trying to think of what.
Condition, and at some point, we'll get back to the original proposal, I hope.
Okay, nothing needed.
Okay. So on the, we'll take a vote on the amended condition and then tackle the, the other parts.
The original, yeah.
Right, right. So all in favor of the amended condition? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, three, three no. Amended condition fails. All right. Let you, you're on a roll. Keep going with what you have.
All right. Well, I, I would make a motion that the recommendation, as is reflected on the, on the petition, I make a motion in favor of the recommendation, as is reflected on the petition, which will allow the increase in the, in the students per unit, the changes to the, to the parking area, and the use of the two buildings to be used for office spaces. That would be my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? So now that's basically what's part of the...
Yes.
This part here, the lighting, et cetera?
Yes.
Points one and two, as well as the summary?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is that a motion to approve?
To approve the, right, to approve the petition.
To approve the petition as it's been submitted.
Okay. I, I'm still concerned about the parking and the parking spilling over into the neighborhood and on to the street. And I, if I were going to have, propose a, an amended condition, it would be that Randolph guarantee that they have no more students with cars in that place, and employees with cars to park in that lot, that they don't put any more people in there with cars than they have parking for. And if that means that, you know, Suzie doesn't get to live there because she has a car, she's just going to have to live on campus and park it somewhere else, that's fine. But I think if, I mean, I think there, it's a vast improvement in parking, a substantial improvement in number of people they're putting there, but I think they could make it work if they could give us that guarantee. And if that could be a condition, is there any way that can be a condition?
Is there a second for that, or at least for discussion?
I would just like to make a comment that, can I do that?
I think we can have the, we can second and then bring it up for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm welcome.
Which, which no one will. I'll bring it up for a second for, for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So if we have forty total parking spaces, and now we're looking at fifty-six...
Fifty-eight students.
Fifty-eight students there.
Fifty-eight students.
And you're saying we can't have more students in parking, then we go back down to forty students, which is basically...
No, I'm talking about students with cars.
Students with cars. So given that the potential for every student there to have a car is there, so you have fifty-eight cars there, and we have forty parking spaces.
Right.
And so that was, that basically negates, and so...
Well, they can control that. They can control whether the students who live there are allowed to park in that lot.
All right. So if I can interpret what a concern of yours is, Nancy, is that the, there is no spillover from these proposed uses onto the neighboring streets.
Well, we can't control their friends, but nobody can.
Well, correct. However, I think what you're getting to is perhaps there could be a system of a, where they could implement a permit system specifically for that lot. If there is so many space, there are so many permits, they can come up with their own priority system for those spaces. And that in itself would act as a limiter, unless there's some other way they can, you know, get around it. I don't think there's anything that prevents them from parking on a public street unless it's a specific permit area.
Jared?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question of one of the two gentlemen?
You can ask anyone here, whatever you'd like.
Sir, the Chief of Staff, please.
Sure.
Where is student parking? Is there a, a parking lot for all student cars?
Sure. So we actually already permit parking based on if you live in that particular lot. So if you, if you're, if you're, you live in those particular buildings. So if you live in that particular building, you get a decal that says, "I live in this complex, and I'm allowed to park in this lot." Beyond that, students, we have enough parking to accommodate our entire student body through the lot that's located behind, this is hard for you to see because... the lot that's located behind, this is hard for you to see because, but Bell Hall, we have a lot near our Randolph Athletic and Dance Center. So there's plenty of parking for students. It may not be at their front door, but there's ample parking for students elsewhere on the campus. The same could be said of faculty and staff.
So then, if the 58 students there, the, and the 40 parking, so the first 40 people get parking, then, and they have that decal, can that decal be used at the overflow parking?
It can. So they actually get two decals, one which is the overall student decal, and one that is just for this lot. So if they don't, are not able to find a space at this lot, they make a choice of going to student parking, or if they can find a legal space to do so, park on city streets.
And let's say I'm in that area and I park my car in this lot. What's, what am I subject to?
You would get a ticket from the Randolph security folks. I don't think that we would, we don't have problems with neighbors or the general public parking in those spots. We do have the ability to track if someone's going in and out of a, one of our buildings and they're not a student. We can boot them, and we have towed at times. But we start, we try to start with ticketing and then move on from there.
Okay, thank you.
So the reason I asked the question, just to clarify on the line, my daughter, who's down in Charlotte, lives in an off-campus apartment owned by the university, and they have limited parking. If they want to call that a parking lot, they have outside of the building, then she has to go about two blocks down for overflow parking. And that's why I was asking the question, because it dawned on me, okay, well, there has to be overflow someplace there. So we're talking now that you can have, got 40, 58 people, and there's 18 people who are going to be scrambling for a parking spot, and you got a heck of a walk if you want your car.
That's why I was proposing that Randolph can limit the, I don't know, limit who lives there. I mean, there are 40% of the students who don't have cars, and they could put more of those in that building. That's all I'm saying. They have that ability. I would imagine, I don't know that there's anything illegal about choosing people to put in certain dorm space because of whether they have cars, I don't know. But it may not be legal or possible, so it's just a thought.
Well, I mean, this is, I'm terrible at math, so forgive me if I miscompute my figures. But, you know, based on, on what we heard about the average for the number of students who have cars, if there's 58 students, and say, half of them have cars, that's 29, that would be using the 40 parking spaces there, that are, that are going to be in this parking area. And again, I, you know, respect that they haven't made final decisions about what they're going to do as far as office space. We approved a petition from Liberty a couple of weeks ago, last month, I think, that there was some uncertainty about what they were going to do. It didn't directly, was directly involved in the, in the approval of the petition, but it was an ancillary question that came up. And of course, Liberty said the same thing, which was, well, we haven't decided exactly what we're going to do with the building, and office space can change. But, you know, we're talking about, you know, 30 of the, of the spots being used by, by students that, you know, that over 50% of the students have cars, and then there's another 10 spots above and beyond that. I don't know, I feel comfortable about the parking lot situation. I think they're, they've made, you know, more parking spots available than they are otherwise there to begin with. Percentage-wise, and again, this is where my math may be at fault, but, you know, they've increased, even after the student load is taken into account, they've increased the number of parking spots there to begin with. If you think about, you know, especially when Moyan would have sales at her, at her business and things of that nature, there's probably going to be a net decrease with the parking loads out on the street and in the lot. Because if you've, if you've been there when Moyan has had sales in particular, when she had it in a normal course of business, there would, you know, there would usually be, I would imagine, you know, 20 or 30 cars associated with, with her business. So I'm not certain that when the dust settles on all the arithmetic here, I'm not certain that because of the change in the use of the building, of the buildings to office space as opposed to one of them being a commercial establishment, and the increase in the number of lots with a very small increase in the number of actual students, I'm not certain there's going to be, there's going to be more available parking spots there than it is right now, as it currently is designed. So, you know, I appreciate the fellow, my fellow commissioners' sensitivity to the, to the parking issues. I live on a street in which there's one-way traffic if there's anybody parked on the street, so I can identify with that. But that's part of the, the trade-off when you want to live in a, in a closer neighborhood. So, you know, I will not be voting in favor of Nancy's motion.
Well, I'm going to withdraw my motion anyway, so, so there.
All right, and were you still on, on your part on the original one, or?
Well, yeah, I think, I think if she's withdrawing her motion, I think we're back to the original motion.
There we are.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, and did we have a second on that, by the way?
I think I said it.
Yeah, Dave.
All right, perfect. All right.
And so what we're voting on is the entire package.
This as is?
As is. And so.
I'll call a question. Did you have any more?
I just, I'm just, with the numbers there, I'm just, so, I think we're voting for everything, including the increase in number of students.
Correct, yeah. This, this as, what was in our drop box is this as what was left at the front door, so to speak. We're at the very beginning of the meeting.
An hour, an hour ago.
An hour ago, yeah. And, and with this, again, I'm fine with the administrative use. I do have serious concerns about the increase in density. Now it becomes down to, at what point does that override the administrative use? You know, your point is valid, that there are no additional units. The counter to that is, we did have a lot of discussion in the recent zoning on a unit might not increase, but we still wanted to limit the number of non-related households per unit, which did not increase the number of units, but still, you know, that's the other side of this. The part that I do recall is the significant improvement of your employer over time on how the neighborhood complaints, which were rather significant, how over time those have been adequately addressed. I don't know what occurred at the neighborhood meeting, and I don't know enough really about the neighborhood complaints for the, for Randolph College. I do get concerned when people bring up issues about people on decks and being loud at night and so forth, and the, their stated comments about lack of prompt resolution. When I weigh this, I will still be voting in favor of this, just based on what overrides this, with the caveat that if there are more issues with students in this area that can be brought up to, you know, council prior to this, I think they should certainly take note of that and consider it. At that point, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The next public hearing is, Petition of Amerco Real Estate Company to rezone approximately 12 and 72 hundreds, 12.72 acres, from I-2C Light Industrial District, conditional, to B-5C General Business District, conditional, to reuse and redevelop an existing site as a self-service storage facility with accessory retail, equipment rentals, warehousing, and RV storage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of Planning Commission. So the property at 7401 Timberlake Road is currently zoned I-2C as a, as a result of the 1995 rezoning of the property. At that time, proffers were established that limited the use of the property to purely a manufacturing use. Otherwise, what the petition that's before you today would typically be permitted by right. However, the proffers that are out there limited, limited it to only manufacturing. This property actually has a pretty long history of being rezoned. It previously was B-5 from 1985 to 1995, and before that, it was I-1. So it's gone from I-1 to B-5 to I-2, and now the proposal back to you today is to go back to B-5. We do believe that the B-5 zoning is a better fit along this corridor, especially, it's, you know, it's better fitting with the future land use map, which recommends a community commercial use along this entire area, as shown in red on the slide. Overall, U-Haul's redevelopment of the site, well, really, it'll be a net gain for the city. It's reusing an otherwise vacant parcel where existing infrastructure is readily available, it's adequate, it's really ready to be redeveloped. They provide pretty good buffers to all of the surrounding residential areas. There's a wooded area around the creek in the rear where the residential properties are. Additionally, they will be performing maintenance on the existing stormwater facility, which is right here where those purple lines come together. Those are the stormwater drainage pipes. And they'll, they'll likely be reducing the impervious area on the site to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff coming, coming off the site, and also meet the new stormwater regulations. Finally, they, they have proffered their site plan where it shows that they will be providing sidewalk along the frontage of the comprehensive, oh, sorry, along Timberlake Road, which, you know, meets a pretty key comprehensive plan goal that Planning Commission has supported in the past, for sure. One issue that arose at TRC were concerns from our Water Resources Department about vehicle washing. It's my understanding that U-Haul is in discussions with Water Resources now, and then the, any issues at the Kemper Street locations, location will get taken care of through Water Resources, and then for this location, it'll get taken care of at final site plan review. Really, my only concern with this proposal is that the proffers that they are proposing now do kind of severely limit any future redevelopment, should the same thing occur in the future. We discussed it with the petitioner, and they preferred to keep the proffers that way. Really, I, when thinking about it, they were harming themselves more than anybody, and it's perfect, it's, they're perfectly within their right to restrict their property use on themselves. So, let's see, let's go to their site plan. So on their site plan, the Timberlake Road is over here, we've kind of shifted it on you. There will be a few additional requirements at final site plan that aren't shown here. The screening will be required of any outdoor storage areas, as well as any other kind of objectional industrial-type uses. And then additional landscaping will be required, which is mostly kind of foundation plantings along the building frontage. So with that, Planning Commission does recommend approval of the petition. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Great, thank you, Ann, for that. Excellent narrative. Who's here to speak on behalf of the petitioner? If you could come up, please, and sign in, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Staying Commission.
You can have a seat, get comfortable.
Michael Graybill. Yep.
Anything that you would like to add, or?
Um, we're trying to rezone this to be a U-Haul location. We've looked at everything, and we're willing to agree to everything that's on the, this is the first time I've ever done this. That the, it had rezoned.
Great. Fantastic. And I'll keep you up here. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this? All right, you can have a seat. I'll have Mr. Case come up. Thank you.
I'm Gary Case with Gary Case &amp; Company, and I represent the current owner of the property. I sold this site originally to Lowe's back in the day. I sold the dirt, so that kind of makes me old as dirt, I guess. So I have a lot of history with this property. I sold it for Lowe's to the current owner, and we leased it to Belvac. It wasn't an ideal industrial building, but it was so close to Belvac on Old Graves Mill Road, they adapted and made it work. And over the years, they had manufacturing at one time, and then they went to some warehousing and R&amp;D, so you didn't see a lot of cars because there's only a few guys, you know, working in there. And several years ago, they finally added on to the existing facility on Graves Mill Road. You can see it from the expressway, so, and they've got the capacity what they need now. My point would be is, it's not an ideal industrial building, you know, so this would be an excellent use. Nothing's going to change far as the buffers, you know, the natural area buffers around the back, you know, that joins the neighborhood. It is going to be enhanced because there is additional screening, you know, things that they have to do now under the new orders, plus the stormwater and the sidewalk. One other thing I think is paramount is they, they have a traffic study that they average, you know, as 31 trips on a weekday and probably 53 on the week, which is in the package on the weekend, which is way substantially less than pretty much anything else that they could go in there. So we, we think it's an excellent use, and we, obviously, a little biased because my client owns the property, but, but I think it does represent good planning. We ask you to concur with the staff's recommendation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Case. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition of this petition? If there is no one to speak in opposition, then the public hearing is closed. Planning Commissioners, any comments, questions, or concerns?
This piece of property being used again.
Yeah.
And regarding the proffers. So just remind me, if somewhere down the road this did come up again, would, that would all have, that means it would have to come before you guys, before Planning Commission again, right?
Correct. Yeah, they listed exactly what they would like to do with the property, so if it's anything outside of what's listed in that proffer, then they'll be coming back to Planning Commission for approval, yep, and City Council.
Well, I live off of Timberlake, and when I saw the sign go up, I didn't even have to see what they were requesting. I was relieved because it was an empty building, and I saw, and then when I read the details, it definitely seems like an improvement all around. And I, I always like to point out when we get such detailed site plans, and a lot of the info that is not necessarily required at this stage of the game, a lot of the environmental stuff, it's appreciated, that that's included. So it's, it's nice to see all that, and I don't, I don't see any downside to this, by any means.
Did you want to continue with a motion, and then?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the petition as presented.
Since I have three positive comments so far, for you to let you transition into that. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now, since you had your first part, I'm still defer to Nancy, and still, since she hasn't had a chance to speak yet. Anything you'd like to add?
Not at all. I too am happy to see it being used, good use.
So am I. I think this is an appropriate use of the parcel.
Mr. Chair, may I remind you that we need to waive the 21-day?
Twenty-one day, yep.
So as we do this, thank you, I appreciate that. I had a little star next to that, I appreciate that.
I move that we waive the 21-day.
All right, second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we're back to Dave's motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Quick. Any other business, any other thing we need to know about time on the schedule, anything we need to prep for, or?
If you're interested, there's a neighborhood meeting for the Timbridge Hill Sidewalk Improvements tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Yoder Center. Timbridge Hill Sidewalk Improvements, I don't know if you remember, about a year or so ago, the Timbridge Hill Sustainability Plan was approved. There was community development block grant funds that were applied for, obtained to do sidewalk improvements in that area, but that project's moving forward. I'll be going to the neighborhood meeting tomorrow evening to let the residents know what to expect when the construction. what to expect, when the construction's going to be occurring. That happens tomorrow from six to seven at the Yoder Center. Uh, zoning ordinance is going to public hearing with council on November the tenth. Um, we've had two work sessions with them. We're going to have another prior to the public hearing, and it's anticipated that we'll probably have a couple more before they make their final decision on it.
Any, any major issues that have come up with council?
I think the biggest discussion right now is the number of unrelated people per lot and chickens. And out of a four hundred and some-page document, I don't think that's such a bad record, so.
Where's the Yoder Center?
It's on Jackson Street.
Second in Jackson. Do they want more chickens or fewer chickens?
Uh, more chickens, I believe.
Unrelated, unrelated.
Uh, they can be either, just so they're not the same sex. No males.
All right, any further business? We are adjourned.